Testing one two three. Testing one two three, one two three. Testing. Testing one two three, one two three. Okay.
All right, it looks like the Director of Planning, Ms. Nestor John, would like to offer a department update?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd just like to remind everyone that we will be having the hearing for the County Development Ordinance on September 24th at 5:30 PM in the Nat U Hill Room. Just as a reminder for folks, the MonroeCDO.com website is the place to go for the latest updates. You may have received a postcard in the mail pointing you to our website as well as the date of the hearing. We are taking feedback both in person during the hearing ahead of time via email, or you can also fill out a feedback survey which is under the Useful Links section of the CDO website. Just as a reminder, if anyone has any questions, they're welcome to give our office a call, 812-349-2560, or give our office an email at planningoffice@co-monroe.in.us. We look forward to seeing everyone on the 24th, and please contact us if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nestor John. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Great, thank you so much. MonroeCDO.org. Or dot com, sorry. Okay, any other department updates? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on the agenda. We ask individuals to limit their time to three minutes per person. Please share your name and your county of residence when you offer a public comment. Anyone wishing to offer public comment can raise your hand on teams, or you can come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, please.
Yes, move approval of the minutes from September 4th, 2024, and July 23rd, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits?
Me either.
All those in favor approving the minutes, September 4th, 2024, and July 23rd, 2024, executive session of Council and Commissioners, signify by saying aye. Aye, motion carries, 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, September 11th, 2024.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Miller?
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket...
since 1967 and currently provides drinking water to over 130,000 people. And Lake Monroe provides recreational boating, fishing, and swimming opportunities to tens of thousands of visitors per year and generates over $40 million in economic impact annually from recreational tourism. And Lake Monroe provides recreational and scenic opportunities that improve the quality of life for county residents, and the lake and its adjacent wetlands provide critical habitat for wildlife, including the bald eagle.
Whereas, 2024 marks the 60th anniversary of the construction of Lake Monroe, and Monroe County has taken an active role in protecting the health of the watershed and the water quality of the lake. The Monroe County Stormwater Board has provided financial support for the development and implementation of a watershed management plan and a community action initiative project in collaboration with the Friends of Lake Monroe. Monroe County has shown its dedication to protect and preserve Lake Monroe by ensuring compliance with environmental protections provided by local ordinances and federal statutes.
Whereas, every member of our community depends on clean, abundant water and has responsibility to do their part to protect Lake Monroe as a valuable resource for generations to come. We recognize the vital importance of Lake Monroe and make a commitment as a community to protect and preserve the lake. Now therefore be it resolved by the Monroe County Board of Commissioners does hereby declare Sunday, September 15, 2024, as Lake Monroe Day proclaimed this 11th day of September 2024. Thank you so much, and we'll move on to department updates. Do we have a representative from the Health Department here?
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Wastewater concentrations of COVID have continued to increase as of September 3rd. We've seen a small increase in emergency room visits for COVID-like illnesses as well. The Health Department still has free COVID tests available. The public can walk in Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. to pick those up. We have flu and COVID-19 vaccines available through our public health clinic located at 333 Miller Drive. You can call 812-353-3244 for more information or an appointment.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, I was on the phone yesterday with a person from ProMD who does the county health clinic now, and she said that for the county employees, we would be providing flu shots through the clinic, but not COVID-19 because we don't have the refrigeration capabilities for what's needed for that particular vaccine. But also I learned that if you've had COVID within the last three months, they encourage you to wait because you still have immunity from having had the COVID. They encourage you to wait three months before you get that vaccine.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Okay. I don't have any questions either. Thank you so much. Ms. Kelly? All right. It looks like the Director of Planning, Ms. Nestor John, would like to offer a department update.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd just like to remind everyone that we will be having the hearing for the County Development Ordinance on September 24th at 5:30 p.m. in the Nat U Hill Room. Just as a reminder for folks, the monroecdo.com website is the place to go for the latest updates. You may have received a postcard in the mail pointing you to our website as well as the date of the hearing. We are taking feedback both in person during the hearing, ahead of time via email, or you can also fill out a feedback survey which is under the Useful Links section of the CDO website. Just as a reminder, if anyone has any questions, they're welcome to give our office a call, 812-349-2560, or give our office an email at planningoffice@co.monroe.in.us. We look forward to seeing everyone on the 24th, and please contact us if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Nestor John. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Great. Thank you so much. MonroeCDO.org. All right, or .com, sorry. Okay. Any other department updates? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on the agenda. We ask individuals to limit their time to three minutes per person. Please share your name and your county of residence when you offer a public comment. Anyone wishing to offer public comment can raise your hand on teams or you can come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next agenda item, please.
Yes, move approval of the minutes from September 4th, 2024, and July 23rd, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits? Me either. Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes, September 4th, 2024, and July 23rd, 2024, executive session of council and commissioners, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable, September 11th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Miller?
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for September 11th, 2024 totals $1,532,214.11. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments.
Right. Any comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Is there any public comment available on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable, September 11th, 2024, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. We don't have any reports today, so we will move on to new business.
Yes, move approval of the Harrowfish Inc. Chiller compressor replacement for the Justice Building. Fund name, 2022 GO bond, fund number 4815, and amount of $47,850.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have Mr. Kreider joining us to tell us all about it.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet. This request is to approve the proposal submitted by HFI in the amount of $47,850 to replace Circuit B's compressor in the chiller at the Charlotte-Zeke Low Justice Center. The unit is currently running at 75% capacity and able to cool. However, if an additional compressor were to fail, the chiller would decrease to 50% and not be able to adequately cool the facility.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just, considering that the jail is a part of that facility, I think it's extremely important that they not be allowed to become overheated. That can lead to a lot of bad situations.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Giffens?
I completely agree with Commissioner Jones, yes.
It's another one of those expenses for this building that continue to mount up. Thank you for working on this. It's important to cover this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Harrowfish Inc. Chiller compressor replacement for the Justice Building, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move, sorry. Move approval of the Kirby Risk Service Agreement for Polycarbonate Lens Purchase for the Jail Fund Number, again, 2022 GO bond, fund, I'm sorry, that was fund name, 2022 GO bond, fund number 4815, in an amount of $11,124.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Kreider?
This request is to approve the purchase of 50 polycarbonate lenses in the amount of $11,124 to replace light fixture lenses that are becoming brittle and breakable in the jail. The cost includes creation of a new mold, lens material, gaskets, and freight.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
Again, this is thanks for our jail. When I was looking at these two combined, it's just under $59,000 for additional costs that we're incurring at that facility, and we need to move forward on a new one, a new facility.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, is the new mold necessary because this is a product that's no longer available?
Yep. The current lenses are obsolete that mate to those light fixtures, and this was actually a pretty creative alternative that they were able to come up with.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any comments or questions on this from the public? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Kirby Risk Service Agreement for a polycarbonate lens purchase for the jail, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Move approval of the Indiana Department of Health High Impact Prevention and Surveillance Health Grant Agreement. Fund name, harm reduction, fund number 8153, and a grant amount of $56,778.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Kelly?
Yes, so this grant funding supports salary expenses for our harm reduction specialists. The harm reduction specialist collaborates with the Indiana Recovery Alliance, providing testing, referral services, and harm reduction education in the community.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I'd like to point out that last week at the recovery summit that we ran, that there was actually naloxone training. And part of that naloxone training was trying to stimulate a person to make sure that they really were not just taking a nap, basically. And so there's a lot to learn with what goes on, but I'm really proud that we're one of, I think, eight counties in the whole state that has a syringe services program and does this kind of harm reduction.
Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
Yeah, some of the statistics for this program are actually very impressive. It sounds like it's been quite successful for us.
We really appreciate all the work that's been done to support this program and to continue to receive this grant, which is a positive for our community. So thank you for that and your staff. All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You could raise your hand on teams or you can come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Indiana Department of Health High Impact Prevention and Surveillance Health Grant Agreement, signify by saying aye. 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 Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of AT&amp;T Centrix Order, fund name, County General Fund Number 1,000, in an amount of $27,810.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Krung?
Good morning, everyone. Greg Krung, Technical Services Department. I believe I've mentioned to you before that AT&amp;T reached out to us. They're slowly but surely discontinuing the use of all their analog lines for business needs. So they're working now to get all their customers off those analog lines and moved over onto voice data. We still have multiple analog lines that act as redundancy lines for our fire panels that are required by code. We still have some communications lines for like our parking garage that are still on analog system. So we still have quite a few floating around. So in our discussions with AT&amp;T trying to lay a plan out for this, it was recognized by AT&amp;T that our contract had expired some time back, and they hadn't caught that. So in order for us to keep costs down to make these changes, it's necessary to pull this, to pull another contract to get us through these changes. Otherwise, the off-contract charges will be about double as to what this agreement is. And how this will work is, as the Centrix and Potts lines get dropped, those will get removed from the bill and transferred over to the VoIP. So as time progresses, we will see this monthly amount decrease. They are anticipating, they went ahead and did three years anticipating this taking a while. Our fire panels have to be reviewed and things like that because they'll have to go to a cellular signal to act as redundancy as part of the fire code. So there's some other cleanup work and some things we have to get figured out in order to get us fully moved over. So this will take probably a couple of years to completion.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I'm always impressed with Mr. Krung's knowledge and his dedication to getting things done right.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I had no idea that telephone lines are quite this complicated. But I'm glad that you understand it and are taking care of it.
Well, Wendy Goss is our, I'll call her our phone guru for lack of a better term. She wears many hats, but she's constantly combing through this stuff, seeing, trying to figure out where we can make changes, where things aren't needed so we can make some cuts. And so she's really, she stays on top of it. So her help has been tremendous in all this.
So the original idea for having analog phone lines, the old hard-wired phones, was in certain situations that that would be a failsafe. In other words, if the power's out, if the cell towers are down, whatever else is going on. So how do, or if the internet's down, how do we manage that without analog lines? It sounds like AT&amp;T is just not going to provide them.
That's correct. They are, at a certain point, they will shut off all support, everything to business analog. The only way we can address that as a moment is cellular. So that is our fallback is cellular data plan, and that's what's going to have to be across the board. Both telephone communications and our fire panel and security system communications will have to be on wireless signal, yes.
Well, I, like Commissioner Giffens, I really appreciate your work on this. This is something that's going to take a while to get through, but it's important, it's important that we do it. So thank you. Thank you for your attention to this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You could raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the AT&amp;T Centrex Order, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next item, please.
Yes, move approval of Resolution 2024-33, approving the issuance of a general obligation bond. Fund name, GO bond, fund number to be determined, in an amount not to exceed $3.1 million.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is something you see every year. This is a 3.1 general obligation bond, which we have issued every year for at least the last 17 years, I believe. This is basically how the county keeps up a lot of its capital equipment needs utilizing this structure. You approve this resolution and then it would, process-wise, it'll go to the council for approval. They'll do a first reading at their meeting on the 17th and approval in early October. Typically, the project list is what is usually most interesting to people, and so I put it in the agenda cover sheet, and it includes such things as airport improvement, park improvements, including improvements to the restrooms at Flatwood Park and the Carstathlet complex, computer, camera, equipment, jail repairs, some dump trucks, some generators, and some equipment for probation and law enforcement.
And roofing.
And emergency.
Yeah, roofing. Roofing. Okay, good. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I want to thank Ms. Birdie and Mr. Cockrell for working on this.
Yeah, it's quite a list. Yeah, and it's, all of, all of this is necessary. There's nothing frivolous on this list at all. But once again, we have more jail repairs included, which is...
We have to.
Yes, we have to.
We can't afford it.
Right, right. Absolutely. Did you want to add anything?
I just wanted to say, yeah, that shout out to our different departments who had made requests in this bond, and the request far exceeded the amount of the bond. And they all were willing to provide reduced amounts to meet their basic needs, but work together so that we can all have a little bit of this particular pie. So I just want to say thank you to our departments for doing that.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-33, approving the issuance of a general obligation bond, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. Next item, please.
Yes, move approval of the United Way of South Central Indiana amended agreement regarding Heading Home. Fund name, ARPA, fund number 8950, in an amount of negative $700,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, right after the ARPA funds were given to the county, we did an agreement with Heading Home of $1.2 million. Working with United Way and Heading Home, we, they have agreed, and the United Way Board has already approved this, to refund $700,000 of that and utilize $500,000 for purposes that I believe were already incurred. A lot of this has to do with the fact that the original agreement had a budget in it, in that budget. They found different funding sources for what we were going to fund, and so that's what had all these conversations going on. So this is an agreement with United Way. We're, essentially, they are refunding us $700,000. I believe that $700,000 through the ARPA meetings have been reallocated towards the Courage to Change program, so it's still in the same general sphere of what the intent of the funds are for.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens? No. Commissioner Jones?
I don't.
All right. Any public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the United Way of South Central Indiana amended agreement regarding Heading Home, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Yes, move approval of the Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission, or SUDAC, recommendation for the 2024 Recovery Summit Speaker Honorary. Fund name, donation, fund number, 4112, in an amount to be determined.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have Ms. Turner King joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. So what's before you is approval of a recommendation that SUDAC made back, or they approved it on June 21st. And it's to provide the keynote speakers, presenters, and panelists with an honorary who attended the summit, which was held, I think it was last Thursday. If there are any questions, I can answer them, but it's pretty...
It felt like the middle of a sentence, but I didn't want to interrupt you. Eddie, comments or questions for Ms. Turner King? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I think this is definitely a good idea, very helpful when people will share their knowledge in these kinds of settings.
Commissioner Giffens?
I was part of the group that did some of the planning on this, and the breadth of folks that showed up for this was really encouraging. We had nursing students, IU nursing students. We had just a whole lot of different groups. And I really especially want to thank the folks who are in recovery who spoke and shared their lives with us. It was, it was startling in some instances.
Thank you for your hard work on that. I know the committee, the commission worked very hard, but I appreciate your contributions. It's made it a great success, so thank you for that. Commissioner Jones?
I already spoke.
You did? Sorry. All right. No, I, it was, it was a great event from everything I've heard. And again, thank you to everyone who made this possible. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission recommendation for 2024 Recovery Summit Speaker Honorary, signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Can we combine each and I together as one?
They're going to ask if you could. Yes.
Would make sense.
Yes. Move approval of Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission SUDAC recommendation for Paint the Town Purple. Fund name, donations, fund number, 4112, in two different amounts, one for $115 for a porta potty rental and for $300 for purple misfit karaoke agreement.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Turner King?
These two contracts is for SUDAC's next event, which will be on September 20th. It's Paint the Town Purple. It's held out on the courthouse, just outside on the courthouse lawn. And so these agreements are so that a porta potty can be rented, and then DJ services will be provided for the event.
Thank you so much. Comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
We wanted to have the porta potty because that way we don't have to have the courthouse open for people, and it just seems like the right thing to do. This will be the, I think, the eighth year that we've done Paint the Town Purple. Each year it's grown as we celebrate those who are in recovery. And this isn't just people who are in recovery from chaotic drug use. It's people who might be in recovery from a gambling addiction. It's people who are, might be in recovery from a gambling addiction or other things. And so we look forward to hosting this again.
Give us the date and time?
Oh, it's 5:00 PM again on Friday, September the 20th here on the courthouse lawn. It will have some games, we'll have some snacks, we'll have a speaker or two, I hope. And again, it's just a celebration.
So much. Commissioner Jones?
I, I agree that this makes a lot of sense.
I appreciate the work on organizing this. It's always a really good event. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or you can come to the podium in Nat U-Hill. Being none, all those in favor of approving the two agreements recommended by the Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission for Paint the Town Purple signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We don't have any appointments today, but I think Commissioner Githens, if you, do you have anything, any announcements you want to make?
Yes, I want to remind people that this is Hunger Action Month. That's why Commissioner Jones and I are wearing T-shirts to promote what's going on at Hoocher Hills Food Bank. They serve over 100 different agencies throughout our region. In our region, one in seven adults and one in six children are food insecure. So imagine you've got a classroom of 24 kids. Four of those kids are food insecure. You don't know if they ate dinner the night before when they were trying to do homework. You don't know if they had breakfast before they came to school. And this, this impacts learning and impacts cognitive development. And in support of this, we also have a collection barrel in our rotunda downstairs. And we, this week are lighting up the courthouse orange to support Hunger Action Month.
Great. Thank you so much. Paint the Town Purple, September 20th, right here at the courthouse lawn, 5:00 PM. Did you have any announcements? Okay. So there is tonight at 6:00 PM, a disc, a public discussion on vote centers. This will be held at Unionville Elementary School, 8144 State Road 45. And that's in Unionville, downtown Unionville. The Capital Improvement Board is hosting a community information input session on Monday, September 16th, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM at the Monroe County Convention Center. And a huge thank you again to the members of the Capital Improvement Board. They have really done a lot of work and we certainly appreciate their efforts throughout this, this whole project. They've really been amazing. So a huge thank you to them. The County Development Ordinance Public Meeting will be held Tuesday, September 24th, beginning at 5:30 PM in the Nat U-Hill Meeting Room. You could go to monroecdo.com to find information, more information about the ordinances and to make a comment in writing instead of attending. All of those comments are treated with same weight. They're both important. So, so we do have COVID-19 testing available at the Monroe County Health Department, 119 West 7th Street and the Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 33 East Miller Drive, where vaccines are also available. We do, are currently accepting applications for boards and commissions. We are looking for an application for the Redevelopment Commission. Please go to co.monroe.in.us for more information and to fill out an application. We continue to hold office hours via Teams each month and you can speak with a commissioner by, go to the calendar, co.monroe.in.us, go to the calendar, find the dates, click on it and join the meeting. The next blood drives, which are being held at Ivy Tech Shreve Hall, are Wednesday, October 16th, 10 AM to 3:00 and Thursday, October 17th, 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. You can go to redcross.org to make an appointment. Thanks to the Red Cross and Ivy Tech for their great work. Residents can also sign up for the Resident Alert Notification System. And this is where you can find weather and other emergency information sent directly to your text, email or via a phone call or all of the above, if you wish. Go to co.monroe.in.us and click on the megaphone. We are asking folks who wanted to apply for the rural housing repair to hold their applications at this moment. We're working on developing another method, rural housing repair. Are we now, or is it changed again?
It, it hasn't changed. I think that we need to talk to the foundation.
Right.
And the.
Asking people to hold on to their applications.
At this point, we are not accepting any more applications.
To hold on to them.
I don't know that they will use those.
Okay.
But yeah.
All right. So as soon as we have information on that, we will make that announcement. We'll put it on the landing page of our website. And we do have a septic replacement program available again with ARPA money. You can go to co.monroe.in.us to find out more information from our landing site. This is for homeowner occupied dwellings in the county outside the town and the city. And we encourage you to apply if you need assistance. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Okay, we do have a work session. So can we come back at 10:55? Is that okay? All right. Great.
People waiting here, so yeah.
Yeah. We'll come back at 10:55 for our work session. Our next regular meeting is September 25th. We are off next week. All right. With that, this regular meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
County Board of Commissioners, it's September 11th and all three commissioners are present. The first on agenda, first item on the agenda is from the Clerk's Office for Election Return Services Agreement. Thank you. There someone online from the Clerk's Office? Okay, I thought I saw a hand raised. All right, great.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kylie Ferris. I am currently serving as the election supervisor for Monroe County. Before I begin, the Clerk has asked me to invite you guys to attend tonight's public discussion on vote centers, which I heard you guys mention earlier today during this discussion. Also, the work session appears, the work session appearance comes as surprise, given the Clerk's request to be on the formal agenda. While the product with Ann Island is ready, time is still of essence, as we are quickly coming up on a big election. I am here today because Monroe County has an amazing opportunity to partner with Ann Island and their software, U.S. Elections Live. Though located not far from Bloomington and Tell City, Ann Island is a partner and flagship company who focuses on high-end IT strategies and complies for large corporate companies. Most of their clients are Fortune 500 companies, including DOW Chemicals and Netflix. U.S. Elections Live offers a complete intelligent soft solution to update results immediately to public candidates, media, and all interested parties. The software was specifically designed to assist county clerks in pushing election results out immediately and has already been implanted in eight Indiana counties. Testimonies from those eight clerks who work directly with our county clerk includes Putnam County Clerk Tracy Briggs, who says U.S. Elections Live is the real deal. Thanks to them, our elections was absolutely seamless. I would highly recommend them to anyone. Perry County Clerk Rachel Rohr, who said, "I put my faith and trust in this company and will highly recommend." Posey County Clerk Kay Kilroy, who said, "U.S. Elections Live is the website you never knew you needed." Spencer County Clerk Darrell Stevens, who said, "U.S. Elections Live is the future go-to site for all Indiana elections." DeBose County Clerk Amy says, "U.S. Elections Live is the one-stop information portal for voters who find valuable information before, during, and after elections." Jay County Clerk John Eads says, "Hey, here is Jay County. U.S. Elections Live is new. I am looking forward to how great the general election will be with them." For all, as a follow-up with County Clerk Eads' testimony, Ann Island is uniquely positioned to have Monroe County set up and ready in time for what could be the most historical election in the history of this country to date. They offer a telephone app and the ability to opt-in for updated texts regarding election results, and none of what they are offering requires connectivity to Monroe County government technologies. This alone offers the transparency and immediacy to voters, candidates, and all parties interested in Monroe County elections. Their mobile technology and platforms can accommodate iOS, Android, Windows, and BlackBerry. Because they can speak to their products themselves, the Clerk personally invited them from Ann Island to be here today to respond to any specific questions you may have about U.S. elections. Also, our office is going to be holding an event on November 7th, sorry, September 17th, for National Voter Registration Day. And my office is working with PACE and Indiana University on representative governments to hold a registration drive from 11:00 to 2:00. If you have any questions about the contract, please let us know.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Yes, I'm wondering why our own GIS group isn't doing this. And they're here today. Perhaps we can hear from them?
Sure, if they're willing to come speak.
Hello, hi. Tronan Wright Randolph, Monroe County Surveyor. As you know, we've been taking good effort in trying to grow our GIS program, and we've been able to provide numerous services. And also, some of them to the Clerk's Office and voter registration. When we were reached out about this, we started to look into it. We met with the Clerk in the Clerk's Office. We demoed what we were able to do. At the end of it, so I guess we do have the bandwidth and the capability to kind of host this data. There's the data that is currently being requested to be hosted, can be hosted in a number of different ways. So we presented our prototype to the Clerk, and she determined she wanted to go in a different direction. So with that, and you know, kind of the sensitivity of elected offices and their discretionary measures and way that they feel about running their office. When the Clerk declined to want to move in with our direction, then, you know, I felt like we can come here and answer questions, but, you know, I feel it comes to more of an elected decision of how they want to move their office. And we want to make sure that everyone knows we're here to assist. We're ready to answer questions, and we could potentially host this data. We intend to host this data. You know, that was some positive discussion with the Clerk's Office. But, you know, we ultimately will defer to her as far as what kind of services she wants. And she didn't want RGIS services, so.
Let's see if there are questions. Did you want to?
If there's any other technical questions, we do have Dr. John Batton, our GIS coordinator here.
Did you? I don't understand what the difference would be between what we can offer and what we, the Clerk is proposing here. Because certainly, it comes out of the election office in terms of what that data actually is and is then shared with another entity before it can be posted. And I understand that they're looking to drill down on a lot of additional data that would go with the voter information. But this is stuff that could be done across time by our own GIS system, is what I was thinking. But again, I need to hear from the experts.
Yeah, the process is, I'm trying to think of a good word for it. It can be streamlined. There's a number of things that need to occur ahead of time. One of them would be a connection to a database. That would be a view connection. So we actually wouldn't be touching any data. That data would either be articulating back to our GIS via like a SQL Server connection, which is a database connection, or it could be done by the Clerk's Office. My understanding of how Ann Island does it is that the Clerk would be actually typing in the data, and then that data populates into an interface. So that's a very easy process for us to mimic as well. Secondly, the concern here would be that we from the election, and so building something out like this, we do have the bandwidth to do it and the capacity to do it. But it is a fairly quick turnaround, right? So that's a concern, I guess. But the process is making sure that the data has that connection, and it's also making sure that the data is entered correctly, right? What it is, is it's a live feed that could show information, not just about voter turnout, but what we could provide in a GIS scope is where these votes are actually occurring by every single level, right? So I demoed this with 2024 primary data, just for a handful of candidates, just to see voter. Basically, I wanted to see what the turnout was from the 2024 data, then also kind of what the results looked like for just winners of these different results, right? To see, do we have an urban-rural issue in Monroe County? I don't know if it's an issue, but yes, there is a difference between, yes, between urban and rural votes, right? We do live in a blue county within a red sea, and Bloomington is a blue city within a kind of reddish county, purplish county. So, yeah, it's doable. We do want to make sure that the Clerk's Office is supportive of everything that we do, right? And because we're building relationships and support from different offices. But, yeah, any technical questions I can assist with?
Not at this time. I guess for me, this isn't a question, but it looks like it's a three-year contract, if I read this correctly. And so they're asking for $41,000 to, I think, for a contract that, as I understood it, could be done in-house. And I know we're not the fiscal body, but I also am aware of spending taxpayer dollars.
I just want to stress that it's very important to make sure whatever we do, we have the support of the Clerk's Office. And we really need them to take ownership of this data, because this data needs to be managed by voter registration. Again, we plan to work with the Clerk. But, you know, it comes to kind of their, I guess, decision of what direction they want to move their office. And so we, I just really want to echo that again, that we're here to provide assistance, services, and we leave those decisions to you. And, but, just want to stress that point one more time.
Yeah, so this would fall into, you know, an existing appropriation of some sort. They're not asking for an additional, so this wouldn't be reviewed by the council.
And I think from the legal department, we had one issue or one concern that I think that the vendor could probably clear up. And it talks about a grant that has been received. This grant was not through Monroe County. It's $425,000, and it is offsetting the cost of this. I guess, knowing nothing about the grant, what happens if that grant gets revoked or anything like that? Does that change the cost of the contract?
I may interject. I do believe the grant referenced by that contract is a grant that another county received. And in speaking to the Secretary of the State in regards to the application of that grant fund to Monroe County's contract, the Secretary of State said that can't be done. So the offset cost would not occur. It would be $40,000 for the first year.
Okay, except that there is an email in our packet, says that they can, I mean, there's something new in there.
I think at best, it's an open question. And so maybe the vendor could provide assurance that, hey, if something happens with that grant funding, we won't be charged more or not. I think that's a basic question.
Did you want to address that?
I was gonna, sure. With that grant, we did get the written confirmation that that is going to be for us to use. And then I just had a couple of things that I wanted to touch on was with us using Ann Island, they don't have to reinvent the wheel. They are, the product's already existing. We only have to give them our information through heart. And so when it comes down to it, it's going to be so much quicker for us to just use Ann Island than it would be for us to go through the surveyor's office. Also, another reason on why we would prefer to use Ann Island is because in elections, almost all of our technology is not connected to the county IT. And so Clerk Brown just does not want anything election-wise connected with the county IT department. And then I will let Ann Island discuss more on the contract-wise.
Yeah, I ask you, since you're still at the microphone, do you know why Harrison County turned this down? Why they are not?
Theirs was because of the, it was the bios of the candidates, which we had elected, that we did not want to use.
Did you have anything you wanted to add? We have other items on our agenda, if you could be brief. Please introduce yourself. Welcome.
Nice to meet you guys. Anjan Kashiup, Ann Island. So I guess, do you guys have any specific questions so far, after what you've heard that I can help address?
Well, for me, I heard Ms. Ferris say that there's a speed issue here. I'm wondering what the difference is in that. Is it five seconds? Is it five hours difference? If we use Ann Island versus our own in-house, I just don't know, and I don't know who to direct that question to.
So I, you know, I can answer from at least our software standpoint. So we have basically have built our own software, which would basically help to, you know, within help to improve this whole process. So currently, the Clerk's Office, if they wanted to actually upload results to the public, they would basically post, it could be their, you know, own PDF file onto Facebook or onto website or into the news, and it's not a true, true live data feed. So within, you know, within us, it would probably take them just a few minutes to actually upload results, and they would actually be shown by the precinct or then by the vote center to the public in just a matter of minutes. As it happens, instead of having to wait, it could be hours or, you know, it could be even days for them to see it. So the speed issue isn't necessarily due to the internet. It's just due to the process. And so we have it down to where we now have, I believe, as of this day, we have at least eight counties using this. So we basically proven this process, and our goal is to keep on growing this thing throughout the, you know, state and then beyond our state. And plus, we do more than just this. This is just one of our own modules. But we've been into business since 07, and this is our, you know, business. I mean, this is what we do, and this is what we live. I mean, this is what we we do and this is what we we live. So for for us to actually be able to handle this and actually do it, we can assure you that, yes, we will get it done. And that you and and that you will be satisfied with what you would you would get. But again, you know, I I can go on and on about what all we we do, how we, you know, can can do it. But I think at the end of the day, we are a business and we we have a team of people and this is what we we do. So if I can answer any other questions that kind of may help to give you more more info, I I can do that.
So how secure is this live data feed? And why is it different sending it to you versus our own GIS system? Or maybe Mr. Cronin wants to weigh in here too on on some stuff.
Sure, so I I can answer at least from then, you know, from, you know, at least our standpoint. So as far as security goes, you know, we we have three layer security. So just as good as banks, if not better. So our data is basically encrypted in that that, you know, sense that that, yeah, it cannot be hacked in that sense. So we will basically, you know, will then ensure that that your your data is kept safe onto our platforms. So the main thing to also note is that we have our own platform. And it's not just 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 a website. Like, we we basically built out a platform which we we have invested, you know, over the span of probably 17 years. I would say at least tens of millions of dollars onto our own platform. So we're not some like just a website group. So we actually handle many data throughout many, you know, at, you know, these major companies. So this is not not new to us as far as handling data. That is not, or that would would be considered very important. So and the main thing is all of this this data is actually owned by the county. So like this, this data is actually Monroe County's data. So this is not not data we're actually creating. This is coming out of your your own system. But we have had the main process down, we we and we have made platform down to where it basically portrays it in a way that is easy for the public and then for for the new you then as a county to actually see it.
I don't, we don't typically get the work packets until really right before our meetings, like the day before. So I don't, I haven't been able to explore what the other counties things look like in terms of the other counties that use service here in Indiana, which is also something I'd I'd like the opportunity to do, which. Yeah.
Sure, and and to also add to that too, I just wanted to note, again, I I think regarding that that one question about the, you know, grant money. So basically, $25,000, that that was the grant money that that was then, you know, allocated to then one one county. That that county chose not to inhabit. So we we then spoke with within our our clerk here. And basically, we were then able to use that that same money here because we already got that grant money back in April. So the, so basically, that that money was actually with us for that that county. And then after speaking with with then their their, you know, I guess, it it it'd be the state's office. They said that we could use that money towards Monroe County so that your money is is basically going to be taking off that one $40,000, which would result $15,000 for the first year and then recurring.
See the state do that, Ms. Purdy?
We have a question, sorry, just for clarification, and I I don't mean to take us back, but that's an interesting statement regarding the grant. But I actually kind of want to, I don't understand the difference in the upload of data. So it was mentioned that Hart would provide the data to you. Can Hart provide the data to our GIS people also? I'm just trying to understand what that difference is, if there is one?
Yeah, I wanted to jump in, but also make sure we gave time for Anne Island. So I want to make a distinction. These are two different type of services. I, if it's not clear, I'll just cut to the chase. We can develop a web app or dashboard and we can host this data and we can customize it. We plan to continue to do that with the clerk's office or voter registration because it could serve for very valuable analytical purposes. So the 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 concern about the turnaround, that's a real one. But ultimately, it comes to a a service kind of a choice or direction. And, you know, I I hope that as 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 clear as I can make is, we could provide a service that can host the data. Anne Island can provide a service that hosts the data. And it's the choice that the clerk wants to go right now. And, you know, it's her decision to be here to request it.
So what you're saying is that the same data that would be transmitted from Hart to Anne Island is the same data that would be transferred to our office?
We have access to that data, yes.
That's all I wanted to know, thank you.
I can't see any way of that not being a possibility. But again, I don't want to speak out loud because that would be something that the voter registration or, you know, the clerk's office would be able to say, yes, definitively, we can give this to you.
The turnaround time he's referencing is to set up the program, not the data.
Not the actual data, okay.
Yeah, that's all, that's what he's, we had a question for Mr. Cronin about security, since that was raised, right?
So I'm just going to go ahead and address the elephant in the room there because I think a lot of this stems back to the situation we had back in June. So one thing I commented on before, and I want to make it perfectly clear to everyone here in the public. During our recent issue that we had, no way, shape or form was any data belonging to the clerk, election operations or voter registration in any way, shape or form affected. Most of the data that runs through voter registration during election periods is done through the state's SVRS system. That's all contained on their cloud, in their security and never touches our network. So from a perspective of security and concerns that I have, I do have no concerns over election security or the security of our networks or our systems at the county at this time that would prevent or cause any issue going forward. I understand that the clerk's had her reservations and has her statements and I understand those. But I'm stating for the record that I have no security concerns whether we host this data or with the upcoming election.
As Greg just said, all of our data is currently being held with the state. That's why we would prefer to continue to have all of our data not held within the county. Ultimately, for transparency, we would prefer to work with an independent independent vendor.
Well, I I kind of want to ask about the contract, which is a three year contract.
Correct.
And there's no election next year.
Correct, you still have to continue to pay it so that we can maintain the data that we have on there because we will be uploading data from this election and then we will also be eventually uploading past data. So we'll be doing that during the off-season election year.
And is that a cost that we would incur if the county were to do it? Would we have to pay the county during the off year to maintain data?
I mean. As I said, we would prefer to work with an individual vendor.
Since I understand that this could put a lot of pressure on our GIS people to put this together so quickly for this election. It might make sense to me, although I really don't see why an outside vendor would be considered to be more transparent. I don't believe that there are laws requiring transparency of them the way there are in the county. But I can imagine signing a contract for one year to relieve the pressure on our employees. But a three year contract doesn't really make much sense to me.
The three year contract is to hold out with the current sitting county clerk. And then after that, the decision would be for the next clerk.
So the the $15,000 covers 2024. Just, it's just for the last few months of this this year and then.
That is the startup cost.
Okay. It's to me, a year is like 365 days, not, yeah, 111 at this point. We're not voting on this today, right?
It's on our work session, so we could put it on our agenda if you want for the for the 25th.
That'll give us time to look at some of these other and reach out to other people if we want, yeah. And and I did look through the PowerPoint that you sent this morning and things like that too, so.
Yeah, and the clerk just wants to reassure the voters of transparency and respect for them on getting these results out to them as quickly as possible.
If somebody else wants to make a comment here?
Hi, Jason Funk from the Auditor's Office. I just have one question for Election Central. What is the concern with speed? Because the data needs to be correct. We don't, I I feel like we shouldn't be concerned about speed.
The speed is the process of getting the software up and going. It's not the speed of getting the results out. It's having the fact that we have this software that's already reinvented, that's invented. It doesn't need to be reinvented.
Well, basically, I just wanted to state out loud, my concern with speed being such a concern here with everyone else, when this data, we already have this data in-house. And I definitely feel like our GIS Coordinator and our Surveyor's Office is more than capable of keeping this in-house and creating this platform for the public to use. I don't necessarily believe we should be focused on getting returns out in a incredibly fast manner when the returns and that data needs to be correct when it's relayed to the public. And that's that's my main concern with this, so.
Yeah, I s- I see that. And I think one of the things that's interesting is that in the past, and and I wouldn't say this was the case with the most recent elections, but several years back, we had very slow election results. But but it wasn't because we didn't have software. It was because there were issues with counting and making sure the results were right before they were released. So no matter what, that's going to take whatever time that's going to take to get the results and make sure they're right. And so the question of speed is about getting it out to the public. And that means you have to input the data somewhere and it goes out to a company or a platform or something on our website or whatever it might be that will then, that information can then be available. So I I don't want the public to be confused by this either because I know there have elections passed that there were issues with how long it took to get results. And those were issues relating to getting information back from the various precincts and other issues. So that's not what this is about. This is about reporting that data once it is available and and correct. I think it's the granularity of what can be seen because I don't think we've had a lot of complaints from the general public about the actual results. Right, right. But the idea of having, for example, as Dr. Baton talked about, having maps, you know, so if you could, you know, somebody will say, well, it says on this that we're still waiting on, you know, Perry 10. Well, where the heck is Perry 10? Well, we would know that without having to go look back and trying to find a precinct map on our website, which is impossible right now, by the way. But, you know, actually, without having to find that map, it would it would show up on on a map-based system. So I could see a lot of advantages to having our our GIS do this. Because what happens then is if the next clerk decides to cancel the contract and we're back at square one and we're going to have to build everything and then backfill information. So, but I'm I'm happy to put this on our agenda for our next meeting, if that's so we can do some more reading and research. Is there? Since this is a this is a system that's running in other counties, can we actually go to those counties and see what it looks like? Okay, all right. And and would we be able to manipulate some of the data that's that's there to see what goes on? I mean, across time to look at stuff for trends and things like that?
Yeah, so so I mean, this has been, you know, it's it's been live. So you can actually go to the website and then and then view counties that are, you know, now using it. So you can, you can actually see, you know, it could be past data. Like, there's there's even data from, I think, Perry County from 2019 that then you can actually see how that that, you know, at least looks like, where the bios. So, yeah, I mean, it's it's all out out there. It's it's, you know, all all there for the public. Nothing's like being kept off or anything, it's it's all on.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cronin? We we got a, we've got a half hour into this and.
Sorry, just a quick question. One thing I was unclear of is what the, that that is our county's data. So it will be hosted, if we move forward with this, be hosted on another site. But what I'm unclear of, we have to archive that data. So we have to anticipate not only archiving it if we kept the site active, but what happens if that contract expires? So that's our data. And what does that look like getting that data from them? And then we do have to house it again at that point, which puts it on our systems. So that was just a question.
Great, great question. That's, I think, where I was going a bit, but you framed it more accurately than I did, yes.
So the data would still be on the county website as it is, as we post it. It's just a easier, more visual way for the voters to look at the results so that they have that dashboard that they can go to. But then we still have the PDF version of the results that will be posted onto the county website.
Thank you.
And then there was one last comment from Clerk Brown. She said, this is a historical election, everybody will be waiting for the results.
Would you please send us a list of the counties that are currently using this? Are all of them listed here?
Yes, they're all there.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, so you want to put this on our agenda for our next meeting? Okay, all right, good, okay. All right, thank you all and thank you all for being here. We appreciate it, appreciate the information and the answers to our many questions. That was really helpful for us, so thank you for that. All right. We have a letter that we need to consider for approval to sign. Who wants to talk about it?
It would be best if, actually, Commissioner Giffen, she would add a little bit more information. But what I can kind of say in a synopsis is that this is a letter of support requested from the Board of Commissioners for the creation of an Economic Development District. And it would be a district using Monroe, Brown and Owen County.
Right, this is a letter to the Economic Development Administration. And as Ms. Purdy pointed out, the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation has asked us to create and sign this letter of support for the Economic Development District. This is intended, if it is run like it is in other parts of the state and most other counties are part of an Economic Development District, to bring in things that complement what's available, in in this case, all three counties. And so we know that between Monroe and Owen County, for example, we had a have a lot of life sciences that goes on. And so it would be to to make sure that they're doing the work that benefits all three counties and and builds upon what they have to offer. I would like to also point out that this is just a letter of support to create the district. It in no way obligates us to spend a single cent on this. I almost said a single penny and I just couldn't couldn't do that. But so I'm in favor of of providing this letter.
Do you have questions or comments, Mr. Jones?
This this commits us to becoming a part of a regional. Economic development.
It's the support, it's the support of a unified pursuit of a new development district.
It has to be authorized by, uh, the Economic Development Administration at the U.S. Department of Commerce.
I.
Doesn't oblige, oblige you to anything. You're just supporting the concept.
I'm willing to sign this. Mostly just to get more information about it. Back in the early 2000s, the notion of economic, of regional economic development centers was, uh, someone discussed that with me and. When I watched what happened from that time forward, I watched Monroe County really, really thrive. And surrounding counties did not so much. Most of their populations came here to work. They did most of their shopping here. And, and I am not supportive of that. Form of economic development. If it truly supports. The other parts of the region and helps them to thrive the way that Monroe County has. Then I would feel more supportive. Of this initiative.
So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, um, to, um, approve signing on to, to this letter. To the Economic Development Administration, uh, at the federal level.
A second.
Any other comments or questions? Any public comment on this item? Can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium? And Nat U-Hill? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving, uh, this letter to the Economic Development Administration signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. Next, we have, uh, an update on, um, the jail, Vernal Pike.
Actually, I have two different things, but I'll start, I'll start with that one. Um, I just, because we had the presentation, uh, last week looking at Vernal Pike, and I know we discussed, uh. The concern about the sewer availability on that site. Um, I have reached out and I, and I reached out twice, um, and I've asked. For kind of a technical perspective on that, on can the current system that currently exists, can we hook onto it at that site and. And, and be able to utilize it? Um, is there any other technical? Problems or if not, and there has to be some work done, can we get an estimated cost from the city of what that would be? So we have all that information as we go forward. So I just, so we've reached out to them and to discuss, discuss those two things. The second is, uh, last week, um, I spoke with a couple of the commissioners independently about a letter to support SIMTRA. That letter was due to, for the Ready 2 program, that letter was due last week, so I did have, uh, Commissioner Githens and Commissioner. My mind is blank. Commissioner Thomas, sorry. Commissioner Thomas signed that letter, so if you guys could ratify that today, that would be great.
Okay. Uh, make a motion to ratify the letter of support of SIMTRA for grant applications?
Second.
Comments, questions?
Got the letter.
Yeah. All those in favor of ratifying the signatures on that letter signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries three zero. All right.
So can I ask the, the, about the property on Vernal Pike? This is not contiguous to the city at this point, and so other properties would have to agree to be annexed in the city if. We were to get sewer at Vernal Pike, correct?
My understanding is there has to be a. Petition for annexation filed with, with the, with the city before the C, the CBU Director would be able to. Look at the site and determine whether they agree that, to allow the hook on or not. There is a, as far as I can tell from the annexation statute, it would have to be contiguous to the city of Bloomington, so you would have to figure out how to make that property contiguous, which would. Involve talking to other individuals and, and getting them to also agree to be annexed into the city. That seems like, uh. It could potentially be a pretty. High hurdle. Without looking, we looked briefly at the map trying to figure out how that would work. We'd want to work with the city because they know the rules better than we do to kind of figure out what their thoughts are on that. But in my mind, that, knowing what the price would be in order, if we got it approved. To cook it up is an important factor in determining whether we want to go through the steps of. Really going through that process or not.
Right. Well, and I, I'd be curious as to how long that might take because what we heard from Mr. Grass last week was that. A delay of each month is about a half a million dollars. Isn't that what he said? 500,000? And, um, it feels like it would be rolling the dice because we have no idea what it would take to get people to voluntarily agree to be annexed. And all it would take would be one person, a property owner, saying no, and we're back at square one. It, it's really feels like a big gamble to me.
Well, I, I think anything with Vernal Pike at this point is. We have less information about that site than we do the other one.
Right.
We, we know what the buildable area is pursuant to the slope restrictions. We do not know what a Phase 1 would show. We do not know what the geotech is. So if we decided to go to Vernal Pike, we're going to have to accept some risk that, you know, those things are going to come back to the point where, where it's going to be a, a site we can use. Because, again, I'm, I'm referencing that timeline I put together. That decision needs to be made in September if we're going to be open. In, by 2030, right? So it's, it's, you know, it's, I, I just. Whatever site we choose. There, there are always going to be some risks associated with it.
Right.
The, 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 the primary site that we're looking at, North Park, we have gone through and we've done the geotech. We, we're, we've done all those things that we. That we have done with every other property to determine whether we think that risk. Is low enough for us to. Put our feet down and say, yes, we can build here. You know, if you're going to Vernal Pike, you know, the. As, as you guys all know, that's a three or four month process to get all those, those reports back and get everything going for it. So it's, at some point, if we're going to meet that timeline, we're going to have, and we're, and we're, if we choose to use Vernal Pike, we're going to have to. To accept some risks that we could fail on.
And then there's the. Additional potential time that it would take to go through a rezon process. In the city versus a rezon process through the county system, because we, we also don't know the outcome of that.
They already turned us down once.
Yeah.
On a rezon issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Joe?
But I want to thank Jeff for, yeah, following up on this, that, that we are not just. Blowing it off.
We are, we are doing everything we need to do to determine whether that site is viable and the, the sewer seems to be a. Lynchpin issue that we need to, to run down.
Do you have any questions? Okay, all right, thank you. Um, next we have, um, three items, uh, from planning. The first one is ordinance 2024 dash 40.
Morning Commissioners. Um, I am bringing to you, uh, a. PUD outline plan amendment. It's Amendment 1, the first request for North Park 2. This is separate from the other larger North Park PUD. Um, this was created at a separate time and, and deemed, uh, in North Park number two. Um, so just to familiarize ourselves where we are, um, on the site is our GIS service beacon, uh, illustrating the petition site we're looking at. So this is off of North Vernal Pike. It's actually accessed from North Packing House Road, which is dead ends into the petition site. I'm going to jump to your work session packet. Um, so currently, the site is zone PUD. The PUD allows for, uh, light industrial and also quarry heavy industrial uses. So this is a 98.6 acre site. This outline plan amendment request is to amend. The, the ordinance for only 27.5 acres of the property. Um, they are proposing to add a use, and that is called. Mass grading with filling operations. So this use would be only added to 27.5 acres. So the site is a former quarry. Located south across the bypass from the property that the commissioners own. The site has a few quarry holes on site and quite a few cars features. So currently, the site is surrounded, uh, by a few different, uh, land uses. So to the west, there's some residential areas. To the east and southeast, we have a state police facility and, uh, multiple sites that are kind of industrial in use. And then there's a property directly to the north, also owned by the petitioners, um, which is Packing House Road LLC. Uh, they are represented by Bynum, Fanyo and Associates, specifically engineer Daniel Butler. Um, they also own that site. It's currently vacant. So the property. Has gone through a few different transitions across its public hearing timeline, so it's been reviewed, um, a few different times by Drainage Board, Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission. So they're proposing to add this fill. Um, the site, the petitioner state, you know, this, that the, they intend to use the site for eventual, and, you know, industrial development, but currently as is. Um, they'd like to use this for clean fill, and so I'd like to read over what the petitioner states the use is. So. They state that the, um, the fill that the site would see is excess material from construction projects. They say that it, the fill would be clean material from other projects. It could be soils and aggregates. They state that asphalt will not be taken to the site but taken to, uh, one of their other locations and recycled. Some concrete would be brought to the site, uh, where the material would be crushed before incorporating into fill. That onsite crushing of the concrete is possible but not regularly predicted. And that all fill material must be clean and no environmental questionable material will be allowed unless tested. And I will come back and talk a little more about, uh, clean fill and the testing that they are proposing. So to show you the site that we're looking at, the 27.5 acres, so on screen. Is their proposed development plan. So if this ordinance is approved and North Park 2 PUD is amended, um, to add this use. We have throughout the petition process, we have required a written commitment and a few other conditions. We've explored the environmental conditions of the site. Just looking on screen, you can see a lot of closed contours and identified cars features. And there's multiple open quarry pits. So, um, this, this grading plan right here, um, has been examined pretty closely. And we've discussed a lot of protections for the rest of the site. Um, so here we are seeing about 23 to 36 feet of fill. It's along the way, you know, there's been some concern about the amount of fill as is needed. Um, and, and we do have some examples that were brought up at the last Plan Commission meeting. They are kind of perspective views, and I'll go ahead and put that on screen. So if you can kind of note, um, this kind of foot shape with a little bump out here on the north side, when we switch to the perspective view. Here on the screen, if you can see my cursor, uh, we can kind of start to see the shape. This is the area with the proposed amount of fill. Which, um, you know, they state could take up to four years. In time to reach this elevation. It would be filling an open quarry and matching the elevation to the site to the north, which is shown. It's the farthest towards the top of the page contour lines, so it is kind of matching, um, the, the surrounding contour area. The surrounding contours, um, so throughout the process that has kind of this last exhibit, I think, really. Helped Plan Commission and also the Monroe County, um, Historic Preservation Board of Review kind of understand this. The amount of fill that they are proposing. So this is one view of the site fully filled. And then scrolling down, we are looking at quarries, so we are looking, um, southeast right now, almost as if you're standing on the bypass. Um, heading towards Bloomington from Elletsville, so we can see there, these are the current quarry holes. Here closest on the screen, and then farther towards the top of the page in the, in the background, we can see the fill from another perspective. So I think that's helped everybody put the, the site kind of in perspective when we talk about, uh, you know, a 27 acre, uh, fill site. I'm going to jump back to the grading exhibit. So throughout this process, um, the Plan Review Committee reviewed this, the proposed development. For its compatibility with a comprehensive plan. Um, they forwarded no recommendation to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission heard this at a final hearing on July 16th. And they did have, they did forward a positive recommendation, um, with a couple of conditions. One condition was to, uh, having planning the petitioner and Stormwater continue working on the written commitment. Um, and I will go over that in detail, but there were some questions about, specific questions about the environmental fill, what the fill should be tested for. How the testing results would be delivered to county staff. Um, and the timing of that, of that testing. Also, the testing of stormwater or groundwater. So they have broken that out within their written commitment, and we also talk about what would be tested, when it would be tested, and how those results would be delivered. Um, they also include, you know, that they would be responsible for any remediation. The Plan Commission also included, um. The recommendation that is in under the ordinance on page, let's see. Well, if I find the page, written commitment is on page 17. So the ordinance would be page 16. They included the condition that the site pursue a local historic designation for areas shown in Exhibit 1. So that's Exhibit 1 of the written commitment, and I'm going to jump to that in our packet here. So the Monroe County Historic Board of Review, they did, um, include a positive recommendation if, you know, a favorable recommendation of the Plan Commission. Um, if the petitioners pursued local designation of this site. So. Within the written commitment, they, um, included this, uh, illustration that shows property that's on site. Outside of their proposed fill area, so on site but outside of the fill, the 27 acres. And also area that is on their adjacent property that they own. To preserve that area and do no fill, uh, activities. So this here, we can zoom in a little bit. This includes the majority of what is referred to as the long hole quarry hole, which is the long skinny quarry hole. Part of a mill structure and another quarry hole that's located offsite. Okay. I'm going to jump back again. So regarding the written commitment and the environmental concerns, so on page 18, we do have the, um, the. Specific requirements for the environmental testing, um, in between the Plan Commission and now we have worked with, met with the petitioner. The, and the property owner representatives and we've, uh, as well as Stormwater, and they've come to, uh, an agreement on this draft written commitment. Number three is going to talk about how to test fill. And then point number four is going to go over testing, uh, the surface water. So because there's so many cars on site, um, we did kind of, uh, discuss this quite a bit as to, um. You know, any concerns and, and pollution or contamination leaving the site. Um, so Stormwater. Has signed off on this written commitment. Um, I'd like to go ahead and add a note that when it comes to the Stormwater review of this site. We are looking at a proposed development plan. If this is approved, the petitioner will file a, a PUD development plan, and it will continue on to Drainage Board. Drainage Board has heard this, um, I believe, three times. They've reviewed, um, this development plan and they've, um, pretty well signed off as much as they can without approval, so. They are confident with what they have now. So they are confident with what they have now, but, you know, they are saying that they will be asking even more in-depth questions when they, if this is approved and they file for a development plan. But Kelsey, the Tonya, the MS four, she's gone through this and is 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 satisfied with the written commitment. Okay, so as a side note, you know, this is for only twenty seven point five acres of the site. If they want to make any changes in the future, say they want to add mass grading with filling operations to any other part of the site outside of that twenty seven point five acres, they will be required to seek another outline plan amendment through the Plan Commission and in front of you, the commissioners again. So this petition did start with adding that use for the whole site. And through conversation, they have limited it down to the twenty seven point five. Let's see. So we've gone over historic preservation and the protection that the board has requested, that they pursue local designation. We've gone over the written commitment. And I believe I have hit all points that are important here today. There's a lot of information that we discussed at Plan Commission that's in that Plan Commission report that we've kind of, we kind of addressed at that last meeting. So if there's any gaps or anything I can help clarify, I would love to hear your questions. The ninety days for this petition would be her, would be up on October fourteenth. So I believe we have, my understanding is that there's no meeting next week. So I do believe we have the September twenty fifth, October second, October ninth before that ninety days would be up.
Thank you. Yep, like, let's see if there's any comments or questions, Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, I I do remember discussing this in Drainage Board. And and there were some concerns, I believe, surrounding a stream that bisected the property and the cars features and all. But as she said, it'll be coming back to us again and we can discuss those some more.
Commissioner Githens?
You said that there would be, they would be crushing some concrete. What kind of noise can people expect from that?
Yeah, so under the, I believe the the noise control would come from the zoning ordinance and not necessarily from the PUD where they follow our chapter eight oh two performance standards. So any noise would have to be compatible with chapter eight oh two. I I believe under the new CDO, we are increasing the regulations of of how to regulate noise. I know it's a little bit of a vague answer. I can certainly work and see if the petitioners proposing maybe a limited timeframe. I would assume they would limit themselves to business hours, but I could get that on writing for you, Commissioner Githens, if that's okay.
I think that that's important. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, when would you like to hear this particular petition? September twenty fifth, October second, October ninth?
Either the twenty fifths or the second, I'm.
How about the second?
Okay, great. All right, so we could put this on our agenda for October second. Is that all right, Ms. Kroselius?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty six, Mr. Myers.
Hi there.
Little left of the morning, good morning, yes.
Good morning, let me share my screen here, one second.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. So this is the Thomas Historic Preservation Overlay Rezone, also known as REZ dash twenty four dash four or ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty six. And this was heard at the August twentieth Mineral County Plan Commission hearing. And they voted nine to zero to forward it with a positive recommendation. All right, so this is located at six zero five six East State Road forty six. And it is a rezone request to add the HP overlay to this property. It is point seven four acres and is currently zoned conservation residential. Comprehensive plan as it designated as rural residential and it's in Salt Creek Township, section five. All right, so this also was reviewed by the historic preservation board. On July fifteenth, the historic preservation board review voted six to zero to forward this petition to the Plan Commission with a positive recommendation citing several criteria from chapter eight ten dash three, which is the section of the historic preservation chapter of the ordinance that outlines certain criteria that must be met in order for a property to be awarded the HP overlay. And those two criteria that were noted from the historic preservation board were number one, an association with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of county history. And number three, the distinctive characteristics of a type, period or method of construction. All right, so a little bit of background to the HP overlay. It is an overlay, so it does not supersede any of the underlying zoning district, which is the Conservation Residential District. This property is noted in the SHARD database, which is the state historic architectural and archaeological research database. And it's ranked as contributing. So a C rating is given to properties meeting basic inventory criterion of being built pre nineteen forty, but that are not necessarily important enough to stand on their own as individually outstanding or notable resources. They are important to the density or continuity of the area's historic fabric. And contributing properties can be listed in the National Register of Historic Places if they are part of a historic district. Would not, do not usually qualify individually. This property, as I stated, does not negate the Conservation Residential zoning district underneath. And it does provide protections from other local policies. And it also allows for some flexibility with the zoning uses and things like that. A little bit of background with the history of this property. The petitioner did some research about the original owner as well as the previous use on the site. So the original owner was noted as being William Greg Allen, who served in Company One Thirty Eighth Indiana Veteran Volunteer Volunteer Infantry during the American Civil War. The petitioner also provided tax records, photos and newspaper articles detailing the method of construction of the existing residence and its ties to Arbutus Hill due to the proximity of the area known for the Arbutus Flowers presence. And a little bit more on that in a minute. The petitioner did also provide research on the previous use of the property, which was Southern Comfort Bed and Breakfast. They provided some articles from Herald Times relating to the former bed and breakfast that began in the year two thousand. Now, the petitioner does not have any interest in keeping on with the bed and breakfast use. They would be simply living on the property as a single family residence. Part of their research with bed and breakfasts in the area is that they became popular in Bloomington in the late nineteen nineties when there were about fifteen in existence. Moving on to the architecture and style of the house, the petitioner provided the floor plan for the existing structure and included an article that describes the characteristics of the hall and parlor architecture type from the eighteen fifties. The home does appear to have many of the qualifiers under this architectural style, including two rooms wide and one room deep, a stairway and two interior doors leading to the hall and the parlor, a stairway leading to a loft with windows and the gabled ends and built in heavy timber framing and hand hewn logs. The house has two chimneys, one for the hall and one for the parlor. And this style was very popular in the southern states, which would have made it a bit more rare in the state of Indiana. The petitioners believe the house could fall into the construction style based on the floor plan, but did defer to the historic preservation board for their expert analysis of the architectural style. And they confirmed that it does exhibit this style, the central passage slash hall and parlor style. Okay, so here on this, in this report, we have the chapter eight ten dash three. I bolded the criteria that the historic preservation board agreed with that this property exhibits. And again, that's in association with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of county history and the distinctive characteristics of a type, period or method of construction. The report also includes general information about the historic preservation overlay district, what you can and can't do in them and the process for a certificate of occupancy. Or excuse me, certificate of appropriateness. That is the process for any property owner to make changes or development on the on the site. Essentially, the historic preservation board has the authority to review those plans and make sure that they fall in line with the character of the historic nature of the property. Here's the location map, Salt Creek Township. This road that you see here, following south from East State Road forty six is also known as Arbutus Hill. And the petitioner did provide some newspaper clippings that referenced Arbutus Hill. And with conversations with the historic preservation board, it is, it was noted that this area was a destination for Indiana University students and faculty in the eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds. They would visit it from campus because the Arbutus flowers bloom on that hill. And it was quite a sight to see back in those days. So a little bit more of a history there. So here on the on the screen, you see all the pink dots. These are properties listed as contributing based on the SHARD survey. And that blue star on the screen is the existing property and that's petitioning for the HP overlay. Here's the zoning map, as I stated, Conservation Residential. You have forest reserve to the east and southeast and then agricultural reserve to the north. And then a state residential two point five to the west. Here's the site map. And these property lines, I believe, are not a hundred percent accurate, so don't hold them as representative of a survey. And this is the existing house. I'm going to keep scrolling down for some pictures. There's also a structure on the property that is a, an old carriage house of what appears to be one. So this is the existing residence. And here's the carriage house you can see in the back. More pictures here from the site. The members, some members of the historic preservation board did make a site visit. The petitioner was graciously hosted them to give them a tour of the house. And that is where they verified some of those characteristics of the architecture of the property. So here's the comprehensive plan. The findings are all included in the staff report. We do have a letter from the petitioner detailing their extensive research on the property. So I won't go through of that because I already mentioned a lot of it. They also included, or we also have here the SHARD database report that indicates that it's contributing. And then just other exhibits that talk about the floor plan as well as the historic qualities of the property. There's some pictures in here of the inside. I'll just keep scrolling through these. And while I do so, I can also take any questions.
Questions, Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Githens?
No, I just need to read through it all.
It's an amazing property.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, just the the rough hewn logs and stuff and the choice.
When did you want to put this on our agenda? Twenty fifth? Okay, yeah, how about the twenty fifth, Mr. Myers?
Okay, works for me.
Excellent, excellent, great. Hopefully that works out for the petitioner. Thank you so much. All right, next we have ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty seven Patterson Rezone.
All right, yes, so this one is REZ dash twenty four dash six Patterson Rezone, ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty seven. This went to the Plan Commission also on August twentieth and was forwarded to you with a vote of nine to zero with a positive recommendation. It is a rezone request from pre-existing business to a state residential. It's located at thirty four seventy eight South Knight Ridge Road. It's in Salt Creek Township, section seventeen, and it's on two point one three acres. The comprehensive plan as it designated as rural residential. It went to the Plan Review Committee as well as the Plan Commission, as I stated. And essentially, the property owner removed some of the existing residential structures on the property via a demolition permit in twenty twenty three. And then in May of twenty twenty four, the petitioner submitted a residential pole barn structure permit to construct a forty foot by eighty foot residential accessory structure. On, upon review by staff, it was communicated to the petitioner that residential uses are not permitted in the PB zone and that the former structures that were on the property were considered pre-existing non-conforming. So in order to permit new residential structures on the property, a rezone is required. Additionally, it was communicated to the petitioner that residential storage structures are limited in square footage when there is not a primary residence on the property. And with this information, the petitioner submitted the rezone application and indicated to staff that they will adjust their construction plans for the accessory structure to include a dwelling unit within so that it will now classify as a residential building permit application, which does require a certified plot plan. But they won't be limited in the storage structure size now that it has a residence incorporated. Due to the lot size of two point one three acres, the petitioner chose to choose the rezone to a state residential, which only requires a one acre minimum lot size. Other districts in the area are at that two and a half acre minimum lot size. So to avoid a situation where we create another non-conformity, the petitioner elected to choose the state residential district. I have the definitions of both of those districts here, the pre-existing business district and the state residential district. I will note, the draft zoning map of the county development ordinance indicates the subject property will transition into the Conservation Residential two point five zone, if not rezoned under this petition. And the CBR zone, Conservation Residential, and having only two point one three acres, that would basically make it a non-conforming lot. It would require a minimum lot size in order to develop. So by rezoning ahead of time, the petitioner is eager to get started. They want to get to that state residential district. The planning staff, with respect to this petition, if it is to be approved, will ensure that the CDO transitions the property into a similar zone known as the residential one zone, which will allow for that one acre lot size and not have to require a minimum lot size variance in the future. Here I have the design standards for the state residential district from chapter eight oh four. Location map as well. We're out on Knight Ridge Road along State Road four forty six. Here's the current zoning. The pink is pre-existing business. We have forest reserve in the area in that darker blue and then Conservation Residential in the yellow. Site conditions, there's plenty of buildable area on the front end of the property. And we do get into those steeper slopes as we move south across the property. Here's some aerial pictometry of the property and some pictures as well. And the comprehensive plan designated rural residential. This comprehensive plan discussion section highlights green areas where they're, the the rezone request is in line with the comprehensive plan. And anywhere that is not in line with the comprehensive plan would have been highlighted in gray. We've got the findings of fact here as well. The brief letter to the the Plan Commission stating their request for the property in its rezone. Here is a draft site plan. This site plan does not show the new developments of including a residence in, within the the storage structure. So as part of the subsequent actions after this rezone petition, if it is to be approved, they would incorporate that and we would have to see that as a certified plot plan in order to issue permits. Here's just some preliminary drawings they had for the structure. Again, this was right before they elected to include a dwelling unit inside. We have the permitted uses from. We have the permitted uses from the pre-existing business district. Given that the property is now vacant, all low-intensity uses of the LB and GB zones are technically permitted on the site. Again, the petitioner is seeking to establish residential use on the property. Therefore, they're not interested in these uses. Here in exhibit four, I have the uses available in the state residential district. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Githens?
The, the map that you showed us has a good bit. Yes, there's, there's places for buildable, but is there sufficient flat area for the septic?
That will be a requirement, septic permit. It's my understanding that, I actually don't know how far along the petitioner is with getting a septic permit. The property did exhibit a residence in the past, so there's likely an existing septic system. I cannot speak to its condition, but we would require a verification of a, of a valid septic permit before issuing a residential building permit.
And the, the proposed pole barn, that's not going to be for a business purpose, correct?
No, it is just for residential storage purposes.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Not at this time, thank you.
The petition makes a great deal of sense. When do you want to hear this petition?
25th is okay with me, what about you?
Okay, would, would the petitioner be available? Are you be available on the 25th for this as well?
I will be available, yes.
Okay, perfect. I'm not sure we need the petitioner here because it's, it's, it's fairly straightforward. Okay, great, thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Anything else for work session? All right, great. With that, we are adjourned. Our next meeting is September 25th. Thank you all.